Great. Okay, everybody. Good evening. It is Thursday, October tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, seven P M. And this is a meeting of the Town of Bolton Select Board. First on our agenda, we are going to consider a request from Jeff Nichols on behalf of the First Parish Church. At six sixty-seven Main Street, and this is a request to place two temporary sandwich board signs to announce the used clothing receptacle located in the upper parking lot. So I see Mr. Nichols' name. Happy to just hear a little bit more about this request if you're able to. Connecting to audio. There we go.
Nichols.
You know, I've got a notebook.
There we go. We can hear you.
Sorry about that, folks.
No problem.
Good to see you, Brian.
Good to see you, too. So I was just teeing up the request, so you can take it from here to just explain what this is.
Okay. Company named Saint Polly Textile has developed a program where they take used clothing, refurbish it, and then distribute it to the needy people around the country. They are in all fifty states. Hence, we decided to join their program. We've had a shed put up in the back parking lot of our church, as you can see it as you come up the hill. And couple of that we put, they have a yellow, what they call sandwich board down by the road to alert the folks that the shed is there. The intention is to put clothing in plastic bags and then dump it into the into the little shed there. They, as I say, they come twice a week to check it. They usually take out the material every other week. And the church gets a little stipend. It's about twenty cents or more on each bag. It's not very much. We take that and put it into our outreach program, and that's also given to charitable organizations. So we would like to continue the endeavor. We need your blessing to have the sandwich board down on the road.
Got it. Thank you for that overview. I did have a question because I didn't see it like explicitly covered in the maybe I missed it, but what is the like, how long did you plan on having these sandwiches out?
Well, as long as the program is working, and that's to be determined. In other words, if we get enough clothing on a bi-weekly basis, they will continue the program. But as long as the program is working and functioning, we would have it down there. Given in mind that in the wintertime, we would pull it off the road due to snow plowing and that sort of thing. Last thing I need is to have the sandwich board damaged. They own everything, so we don't want that to happen. So in the winter months, say after Thanksgiving, we would pull it up onto the lawn somewhere further up the hill. But say, argumentably, six months down on the road and six months up on the hill.
Okay, I'm sorry. Just looking for clarification for from maybe Marie or Jenny. So it says temporary sign request. But what is it? A temporary sign request or is it a indefinite duration sign request?
Well, it's, it'll be a request as long as we have the shed functioning. How's that?
That sounds like permanent request.
Yeah.
I think that the, from the building inspector's point of view, attempt, he would consider it a temporary sign because it's not permanent in nature. It's not affixed to the ground.
I would disagree. I would disagree with that because temporary sign is for a fixed duration and then it goes away.
And and I don't disagree with you. I was just saying from the building inspector's point of view for his purposes. He would consider, he would not consider it a permanent sign, but the select board may consider it permanent sign. That's your prerogative.
I see. So how about to try to narrow the scope of any potential, I don't know, disagreement at least tonight? Is there a specific duration that you could request for tonight, whether it be a few weeks or a month? I think I'd like to just, I think we need to take this up as a permanent request. Because this, when I read this, I thought it was like, it would be X date to X date, but it sounds like it's truly permanent, but just movable.
Let us say that I would assume our trial period would run for a couple of months. I'm just using that as an arbitrary figure. If we could at least try to see what happens for two months, then we could take it going forward from there.
Let me, I guess, just do a temperature check maybe from the rest of the board because part of what I was thinking is like get through the holiday season.
That, that's two, about two months, yes.
Little over.
I mean, I heard that there was also some concern about snow, so I would think maybe if we went until the end of the year and then reviewed it.
Yeah, I think I would, I'd be fine with with have a duration of through, say, December thirty-first. And then have them come back in because I think the really the the distinction is is that they need to apply for a sign permit if it's going to be longer. And you know, if the, if the, if the program runs for any length of time and they do six months on, six months off, I really consider that as this more of a permanent sign as opposed to temporary because temporary is it goes in, it comes out, and that's the end of it. But this is sort of an on and off kind of situation.
So it sounds like, you know, everybody's open to approval of this temporary sign through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Nichols, is that amenable to you?
Sure. Yes.
Okay, great.
And could I just ask one question, just so I understand the program a little better? Is, my understanding is that in Massachusetts, we're required to recycle certain clothing. And I don't actually know if we have facilities for that in town. Would this be the only kind of compliant recycling that people in Bolton might have right at their fingertips?
Well, there are, you're exactly right. Massachusetts does not allow clothing to be thrown into the trash anymore. There are other towns, other churches in, for instance, Berlin, Boylston, and Southborough that we looked at have exactly the same thing, the shed plus the sandwich board. So there are other, other facilities in neighboring towns. But you're right, this is the first one in Bolton and the only one in Bolton at this time.
No, I think. There was one at the high school for a while. I don't know if it's currently there with the construction. I don't recall, but I can check for it next time I'm visiting.
It would be great, you know, to have that. I know that there have been a lot of questions from the community about how to comply with the recycling requirements in Massachusetts.
Great clarification. Okay, so with that, would somebody like to move to approve the request through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four?
I'll take.
Go ahead, Kate. Go ahead, Kate. You go for it.
All right. I will make a motion to approve a request from the First Parish Church to place two sandwich board signs to announce the used clothing receptacle located in the upper parking lot until December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Great roll call. Stan.
Yes.
Kate.
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brian. Appreciate it. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay. Next up on our agenda, we have our town administrator report.
Yes, and let me, I see that Jenny's just gone off to assist. Could you allow me to share a screen? Oh, I know. Oh, geez, like the multiple hats. Yeah. All right. The, do, do, do. We have all of these open, so why? The overview, and we've been receiving a bunch of calls regarding the news and announcements that went out. But the mailing for the Community Choice Aggregation will be scheduled to mail and drop on Tuesday. So residents and commercial businesses and industrial providers will also be receiving either a letter or a postcard by Friday, the eighteenth. The distinction between the letter versus the postcard is folks who are being automatically opted in are going to be getting a letter. Folks who have already contracted with another electricity supplier will be getting a postcard with detail about how they can switch their account should they choose after evaluating this option. There will be info sessions and the CCA team that has been instrumental in pushing this forward will also be present on November seventh in the afternoon at the COA and on the thirteenth at the public library in the evening. I'm also encouraging people, and you should click on the hyperlink, the Colonial Power Group site with the Bolton community is truly a great source of information, outlines the process, the rates, et cetera. Today, received a letter recommendation to award for the roundabout to A F Amarillo and Sons. References have been checked. And Beta, the project engineer recommends the award. Amarillo's low bid was one point eight three million. The total cost, though, once you add in contingency and police details is two point four four. Goes on two point four four through a four. I've highlighted the following funding sources just to draw your attention. Randy has been amazing. Randy, the D B W director, has been amazing at shepherding and applying available monies. Two of them, though, are the chapter ninety monies that were received from the state. So in effect, he's diverting some of the planned paving work on one seventeen to support the roundabout. And likewise, I'm diverting some of his annual resurfacing that have been planned for three residential roads to support the roundabout. So it's just a F Y I. We're making it through, but we're shifting stuff around. I could skip over this or do it as a public service announcement, but the M V P grant.
Before we go, before we, before we go forward, Marie, the roundabout project, originally it was about a million dollars. Then we had to go for more money to another half a million dollars because it increased by about fifty percent. What I'm seeing here is almost another million dollars more than the last time we talked about this or anybody talked about this. And we're talking about over seven hundred thousand dollars in chapter ninety money that's being diverted from dealing with the rest of the roads in the town of Bolton for this project. I'm actually quite surprised that it's coming in at almost a million dollars more than we had talked about. And I'll, I'll be honest, I, I was not in favor of the, of the, of the roundabout solution. I was in favor of the, of the traffic lights. The round, in my opinion, the roundabout solution does nothing for the safety of the kids, the safety of the kids trying to cross the street to classic pizza. It does nothing for when, when school is released at the end of the day. It's already a mess down there as far as traffic is concerned when the, the school is released and the buses leave and the kids leave. I'm not so sure I'm, I would be in favor of spending another seven hundred thousand dollars on this project when we're now, we're now going to neglect roads in the town of Bolton.
Well, Stan, what do you think our options are?
Well, all I'm saying right now is, is I'm quite surprised that, that the price of the project has gone up almost a million bucks. And this is the first I'm hearing about it.
Let me just caveat, it has increased a great deal, but close to three hundred thousand is comprised of construction contingency, carrying a ten percent construction contingency on the one point eight low bid, as well as over a hundred and twenty thousand for police details. So.
Oh, I, I understand that, but, but this project was advertised originally as costing a million. And we had to go back out and, and beg forgiveness to get an extra half a million dollars to cover the cost.
Right, as well as securing the rural investment earmark.
Yeah, so it's, I'm, I'm this select board member's not happy with this.
Marie, what, what are the next steps that the board can be taking in this situation?
The the recommendation to award is, is the recommendation in terms of the funding and financing. The bids hold for thirty days. One could, we technically couldn't scramble to have a special town meeting to seek other funds outside of the chapter ninety. So your options are limited.
And did you, you know, I, I don't want to put you on the spot at all, but did in developing this recommendation or this solution, did Mr. Hagland say anything about the impact of diverting those chapter ninety funds for this purpose?
With regards to the annual resurfacing of residential roads, it is a delay. His concern for the one seventeen paving, he ends up assessing all of Bolton's roads through the pavement management plan, and they're all assigned a number. Diversion of paving for, especially for a heavily used road, will impact the degradation of the road. You know what I mean? So the fix in the future will be more extensive. Translating to more costly. He's looking, though, at trying to husband his chapter ninety funds and apply them and believing that this was the number one priority of the town, at least per the capital plan, to push this forward. So working hard to make this work.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't think there's turning back at this point. I don't know if anybody else disagrees here, but I I mean, nobody likes to see the number be what it is, but the low bid was what it was.
So.
That, that's all well and good. But this project was advertised and told to us at a million and a half dollars. Not two point four four three million. So there's really, to your point, there's really not, not much we can do other than I'm, I'm disappointed that this is coming up at this, this late in the, late in the game.
Got it. Yeah, and the next steps for this, following the contract award are to secure a the phasing plan from the contractor and then to start publicizing that both with the school, with the school building project and through the website so that folks are aware. Randy and I had spoken, and our expectation is that there would be nothing visible occurring in the fall or nothing visible to, to residents and to commuters. And that the actual shovel in the ground in our guesstimate would be happening in the spring, but means and methods are at the discretion of the contractor.
Okay, thank you.
We can move on to something happy of Derby Field, which they are still seeking applicants for this temporary grant-funded position. It is a total of forty hours in total. Require some communication, organizing, community outreach and events. And the job description is available online if you go to the Town of Bolton website. Talk it up among your friends and neighbors. It's a great opportunity for someone to both get involved in the future of Derby Field as well as serve the community and be paid. For five eighty Main Street, there is still two items outstanding before the issuance of the building permit, and Pam has been working with Jim Lambert of Wood Partners. Feeling hopeful that sort of the, one of them will be resolved by the end of this week and that the permit will be issued next week. We've been here before, but this is where we are right now. One thing that had been mentioned in passing, I believe in an earlier report, was the Main Street project for the Main Street culvert right near the Houghton Building, sort of the ground zero. When Ty and Bond had gone through a culvert assessment and came up with a count of all of Bolton's culverts as well as a condition assessment, that Main Street culvert was highlighted as the top priority. There had been a project need form that was submitted to D O T saying, hey, do you, do you accept our validity or attestation that this is a necessary project? This has been approved by the D O T for placement on their tip plan, spelling that transportation improvement plan, where they basically tried to slot out in five-year chunks what projects they're going to advance. D O T will be sending us the official notification in the coming weeks that they have moved this to placement on the tip. The timeline for tip projects is very, very long. So you know, five plus years out, the expected cost, but to the point about the roundabout for this is in the five to seven million dollar range. The Town of Bolton would be obligated to fund ten percent. So we're looking at something in the late two thousand twenty-eight, twenty-nine range.
My, but my understanding is with tip projects, the town has to front load engineering work.
The engineering work has been covered by a grant, which, and the expected engineering cost is four hundred thousand. That is exclusively paid for by a grant, and the work is being done by Green International. Interestingly enough, the president of Green International lives in Bolton and had spoken, come in to speak with me. But to his credit, he again, when pushed, said, you know, the town would have to come up with a ten percent match for the, the tip. But he's confident that engineering would fit within the four hundred K.
Okay, good.
So good news, but it is sort of a, it's like a gray cloud on the horizon, but it would help us address a highlighted project. Next update was for the house bill, which had kind of languished, and nothing had happened. I would check in. Senator Kennedy's office had contacted me late last Friday as they're trying to advance this through the Senate. It currently is languishing in bills in the third reading. It is not scheduled nor slated, but I will be following up next week. And.
Do we have, do we have any idea on what E Cam is going to be asking as a price for us to pay for those parcels?
We do not. No. With regards to staffing, we are seeking full-time police officers. If you notice, those vacancies are posted on Indeed, the Mass Municipal and the Town Facebook. And we're hoping that folks spread the word. And then before getting into the meat of the finance presentation, the budget calendar is being finalized. Planning packets will go out later this month on the twenty-second, and select board and advisory will be receiving those on December nine.
Great. Thank you. And sorry about that. I was being ejected from my location. I had to relocate. So. Okay, so thank you for your report, Marie. Next on our agenda is to go into select board business. And the first item is public service announcements. I know you just mentioned the community liaison, so thank you. Anybody else have select public service announcements?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, how about any future agenda items for discussion?
Perhaps we might want to circle back after we have the overview of town finances.
Yep. Happy to do that. Kate, anything from you now?
No.
Yeah, I'm moving to that.
Sorry, Jenny, are you able to just, great, thanks. Okay, so now we will get that overview of town finances.
All right. Going back to sharing a screen. I wanted to broach with the board as I've been working on both the budget calendar, the capital plan and incorporation of all former projects, just sort of a quick snapshot and my best guesses on things. For fiscal twenty-five, if you think of building a budget, sort of like, you know, assembling pieces of a pie, the pie is what you see on the rate. In effect, what you take is your additive town revenues. Correct me for the, the terms that are used here, too. In effect, these are monies that come off of raised by the levy of a two and a half percent increase. Last year, there was a look at the projected new growth from our assessors, R R G. An additional thirty-one thousand in local receipts. And we'd received an additional fourteen thousand in state aid. All of that money in conjunction with transfers from available funds supports our current fiscal twenty-five operating budget. And I just sort of broke it out by, you know, schools and schools, meaning not exclusively Neshoba Regional as well, but also the Minuteman, Botec. Then town salary and wages, town expenses encompassing everything from the cost of pencils and the cost of postage to our mandatory assessments for our pension system, the Worcester Regional Assessment. And then town debt. This is not school debt. This is just exclusively town debt authorized a while ago, and some will be falling off approximately, approximately three years. What I did was run the same numbers and same approach for fiscal twenty-six, trying to look at, okay, what do we have? For the two and a half levy, that's a basic calculation. For new growth, I contacted R R G and Dave Manzello's assessment is more conservative for the coming year, coming fiscal year at a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Our local receipts following revised projected sales from United Cultivation will actually be less than was projected for building the fiscal twenty-five budget. And because I'm a hopeless optimist, though, I'm hoping that state aid goes up fifteen thousand. That, that's just my, I'm, I'm wishful. I presumed, and you're, this is all Marie's world, although I have spoken with the fire chief, that last year's transfer is to support the budget, the operating budget would occur. The transfer from advanced life support for the operations of Fire EMS of seventy-five, same as fiscal twenty-five. Likewise, a twenty K from the park and rec revolving to support the increased hours of the recreation coordinator. Confirmed with the Board of Assessors that the overlay reserve transfer would, that's what they are shooting for, for that inclusion. But these, these little asterisks are, I'm not sure yet if these are formal votes of advisory, but this is my, my take. And then our free cash. As mentioned at an earlier meeting, our free cash was lower than estimated. Free cash had been certified at seven hundred and sixty K. We always keep three hundred and fifty K as sort of a roll forward to successive fiscal years. So there's four hundred and ten thousand dollars available. Free cash should really be applied for one-time expenditures, and I know. Free cash should really be applied for one-time expenditures, and I know we have a second payment to stabilization that's due. And that's a hundred and fifteen. Leaving a balance of free cash for of two hundred and ninety-five thousand. Open question and not not entirely necessary, but in my thinking, it's a question as to whether there is a catch-up for the OPEB payments as last year for fiscal twenty-five. We basically paid only ten percent, twenty-nine thousand of what we would typically be putting aside for that other post-employment benefit liability. Created a fun little chart of basically trying to show, you know, for that additive revenue, here's the difference fiscal twenty-five being blue, orange being fiscal twenty-six, as well as the difference in the transfer from available funds of twenty-five and twenty-six. With a look, with a look at, in in my experience, what I've been used to then is you you basically look at what you're raising from your levy, from your increase in local receipts, from a hope for increase in state aid and other funding sources to do a reasonableness test. Can you fit those components into your additive revenue? I'm ignoring the town debt slice of the pie because we can't change that. So I looked back, going back to fiscal twenty-one. So it's a five-year look back for town expenses, which have been historically increasing about four percent, four point oh six percent. And can project, then our fiscal twenty-six would be in the range of two hundred and nineteen thousand. Of that, before you think, well, are the cost of pencils really that much? Worcester Regional assessments have been increasing nine point seven four percent. They can increase those up to nine point nine five percent per year. And that is a mandatory assessment that we are required to pay. I also looked at our health insurance, taking into account that the Medicare rates that our retirees will be paying, starting in calendar twenty-six, are a lot higher as well as the shift of, we've picked up a few retirees at the end of fiscal twenty-five, and we've also added new positions, replacement positions, or folks have shifted around, cause that. Before I go to the school, Neshoba Regional, I want to say I did basically the same thing for the town wages. The wages and salary increase, the same look back period. And this is running off of Nanachka's historical budget numbers. So we've got two nineteen and two nineteen, and so, all right, can I fit that into the seven hundred and fifty? I could if I hold our Minuteman as well as Neshoba Regional expense at three twelve. Just to sort of smoosh everything, they're technical terms, but they're eluding me at the moment, to smoosh everything into the money that's being raised from the levy. Not that I'm happy at all with the three twelve. Interestingly enough, you know, it's a big number, the Neshoba Regional. It's increasing at a lower rate of increase than the Minuteman number, where we are being hit with their capital cost. At a historical level, and that's the five-year look back, it's been about three point three one percent. This is again, not to say that we should just acknowledge and accept, ah, this is the number. But I'm just trying to get a feel that in in my work here as to, you know, how is it shaping up? It seems doable-ish, and the swag is this is Marie's world entirely. Until I, until I look at that transfer from available funds, the one-time revenues that had been supporting the budget and are supporting our current budget aren't there in fiscal twenty-six. Some of them could move a bit, so the ALS transfers, having looked at their revenue and had a conversation with the chief, as well as potentially the park and rec revolving. But we are missing those, that hundred K of ARPA funds that have been built into the operating, as well as last year's free crap, free cash transfer of nine hundred K. So this is just as a heads up for the board that this gap of the non-levy funds versus the non-levy funds are going to require some hard choices.
Thank you for the, this overview. I think it's want to thank Stan for also suggesting that this be placed on the agenda.
Out my share.
Sure.
Too grim.
You, you may want to, people may have questions, want to go back to slides, but I just wanted to make some time here for any comments or questions from the board.
Well, it's certainly, it's certainly sobering. I I can't see where we're going to close any of the gaps. I mean, I've I've been doing a deep dive into last year's school budget. Then pulling things out, which I'll be providing to Marie and hopefully the rest of you folks. I mean, over the last five years, the the school budget has has gone up an average of, for Bolton, five percent per year over the the last five or so fiscal years with a with a huge increase last year of over a million bucks. Yeah, the the fact that we've, that we were fortunate enough to have to start off with a million and a half in free cash and applied nine hundred grand to to balance the budget. I think, Brian, you know, you know as well as I, I mean, I've, we've been saying this for years and years, and we can't be, we can't be relying on free cash to balance the budget. I've also advocated, and maybe we might want to look, we'll take a serious look at. We we keep draining free cash to the the level of three hundred and fifty K. I I think we need to look at a much longer term program of adding to that balance a little bit each year for situations just like this. So I, I, I've, I spent a good part of today looking at stuff and I, I, at the ver, at the moment, I don't see any easy way out of this. I think circling back to future agenda items, I really think we need to have a discussion with our school committee reps and a earlier agenda item that I discussed with, you know, taking a hard look at the the budget overall, and especially, you know, the 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 school district budget in terms of where where they might have items that they can cut back on. There's, there is a, there is a significant amount of non-teacher salaries that go into the budget. So I, I, again, I, I don't know, I don't know where we would go. I mean, the the last thing that I want to do is is an override. I don't think anybody in this, on this meeting wants to contemplate an override. But we may, we just may have to do that, but I think it's a little too early to 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 do that. But I think we, we need to engage the school committee, we need to engage the district, we need to really seriously look at what is the the biggest cost driver that we have, which is, which is the school budget in in terms of how we can wrap our heads around it. This is, this, this has not been sustainable for a number of years. And it's, and it's coming to a head. It came to a head a number of years ago, but we're, we're really in, in, you know, some serious situation at this point in time.
Stan, I agree with you completely on all of that. You know, I know I'm relatively new to, you know, kind of doing deep dives on the budget issues. But it's clear that, you know, we really have, as a community, prioritized our schools, which is hugely important. I understand that, but it's, it's, it has crept up on our budget. And at this point, we're deferring other things. You know, DPW, I think could really use with a lot more funding for the benefit of everyone in town, which includes the schools. You know, if we're not paving our roads, nobody's getting to school, nobody's getting to work. Everybody needs roads. You know, I, all of our departments are important, including schools, police, fire. But I feel like the school budget has has just become out of control and you know, I would look forward to hearing from the school committee members, you know, what we can do to try and and get numbers under control. Cause I agree, but it's not sustainable, period. And people are not going to want the tax bill that comes along with it.
Well, I mean, not only this tax bill, but but people have not yet experienced the full impact of the new, the new high school. That, that, that has yet to come on top of everything else.
And asking people to do an override on top of that, it's, it's going to be, it, it's not going to be pretty.
No, no, not at all. Not at all.
Yeah, I mean, I think we are all on the same page about that. The one other thing that I would just add, and I know that you've already been communicating with our town department heads, Marie, as you prepare for, you know, budget prep, but at the same time that we're going to be demanding that a really hard look be taken at the school budget, I also just want to make sure that all of our departments have. I mean, here's the thing, we've been scrubbing these budgets for years, so there may not be much more change to squeeze out of a penny, but I would just say, take a good faith look at all of the different expenditures you have. And if there's something that looks like, hey, let's see what it would look like for a year to get by without, and maybe there's a lesson learned, and we say next year it was a bad idea, but maybe this is a year to to just pull some levers that we don't usually pull. Yeah, sobering is a good word, Stan. And thanks again, Marie, for kind of laying it all out there.
It's sort of a, yeah, this is my, I guess it's like my first quarter. Here's where I think we are. I don't have a solution. I have some ideas, but I also just sort of wanted to set the table as this is what I'm seeing as our challenging season.
Okay. So. The next item on our agenda, if we're ready to leave this overview, is anybody, is everybody ready to move on?
Oh, please.
Is to vote on executing the letter of support for the draft open space and recreation plan. So I think Jenny, if you're able to.
Sorry, give me one sec. I'll share. I just have a bazillion windows open.
Sure. I had just made a couple of minor suggestions to edit that.
Did you want me to share the red line or the finished product?
Is it easy to pull up the red line or is that?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, just because I think what they had seen was the draft in the packet, so just so everybody's clear. Are you able to make that bigger?
Yes. Is that big enough?
Yeah, and I'll quickly say some of it was just like minor wordsmithing, but the the main thing is that I think this draft had inadvertently talked about this document being a reference as the town looks to update our master plan. Obviously, that just happened, so I removed that. And everything else is basically the same. So unless there are any comments or questions, could I get a motion to execute and I can sign that?
Make a motion that we execute the letter of support for the draft open space and recreation plan.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Kate?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. Okay, great, thank you. And then we also have to execute the warrant for the state election at Neshoba Regional High School Auditorium, twelve Green Road, on Tuesday, the fifth day of November, twenty twenty-four.
And actually, before, before you do that, I I mentioned earlier, Kate asked earlier if there was anything for signing. The answer is yes, because I forgot about this piece.
Great, thank you. So we had a copy of that in our packets. Unless there are any questions, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to execute the warrant for the state election in Neshoba Regional High School Auditorium, twelve Green Road on Tuesday, the fifth day of November, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Hey, all in favor, Stan?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
I'm also yes. Okay, I, Marie, would you mind just quickly telling everybody what this dashboard is? It's, I'm familiar, but just so everyone's aware. You're on mute.
It's delightful there. The Division of Local Services, Department of Revenue sends out a regular Bolton. And one of the things that they'd highlighted is that they're willing to create financial indicators dashboards for communities. It is up to the community if they wish to publicize said dashboard. But I thought it would be great. I followed up because all their links went to something that was very pricey. And they had relayed, and this is the last two pages in the packet, no, it would be free at no cost. They would just require a vote or a reference of the select board before they get to work. So a lot of the information they have on the DOR DLS site for Bolton actually creates these very easy to understand historical pictures of the town. I would love to have access to more detail if DOR is willing to do it for free.
Yep, sounds great.
Free is good.
Stan, do you want to make a motion?
Sure, I make a motion to approve, Marie, moving forward, to request the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services to build a financial indicators dashboard for the town of Bolton.
Second.
A roll call, Kate?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
And I'm also yes. Okay, and now will I be turning things over to Kate to talk about Bolton Policies Discussion Review or Marie?
I think Marie, but I'm happy to fill in with any
Yeah, yeah.
supplemental information.
Okay. I I wanted to acknowledge that the bulk of the work on this has been done and compiled by Kate. So like, where would we be without this? But in effect, one of the guiding principles was to create something that has active utility for boards and committees. Wanted to draw folks' attention. I'm not looking for wordsmithing tonight, but taking the temperature as to whether this is heading in the right direction in terms of the table of contents, which was each fifteen in the packet. If you notice, a lot of the detail, or not a lot of the detail, but much of the detail is provided by sort of a copy paste of Long Meadow. In Kate's estimation, and I agree strongly, they're able to take language and your typical policies and procedures and translate them into something that folks can understand. It's a clear as well as, you know, technically correct without too much verbiage. What we'd be looking at is if the board is in agreement with this approach, having some general information, having an overview for the appointed committees and how they could, you know, understand their own role. having, uh, an overview for the appointed committees and how they could, you know, understand their own role. And then moving into, uh, conduct and policies, this would be for appointed as well as in many cases elected boards, because some of the policies are blanket for the town, uh, e.g. the sexual harassment policies, conflict of interest, and a fledgling code of conduct. And then to just run through, you know, how do you have a meeting? These are the nuts and bolts as we're hoping to get new folks, uh, volunteering to serve. For parts one through four, um, we've been reviewing this and going through it. And I'm halfway through updating the Long Meadow to be reflective of Bolton. Parts five and six, uh, you know, are, are out there as ideas of defining the select board meeting and procedures, sort of a nuts and bolts. Um, and then, uh, suggestions for positive participation in meetings for the public. Is this what the board was thinking of?
I mean, I think this looks like it's moving in a really good direction. I will confess, I think, um, we got the, some of the language yesterday, so I haven't read through all of it, and I know you're not looking for comments on all of it today, but directionally, this seems right to me. Um, and I think especially the stuff around, uh, the roles, like, wha- what is the role of a committee and a board member and all of that, so we're going to be really helpful, uh, just to have it, and then we can update it every year, or whatever the cadence is. So thanks again to both of you.
I'm directing my, I don't know where Kate is on, on your screen, but I'm directing my thanks and my, my hand to, uh, yeah.
Um, one of the things that I really liked about the way Long Meadow laid everything out was they actually put in one concise place a description of every single board, committee, commission. Um, and talked a little bit about what they do, how many members they have, how the members are elected or appointed, what the, um, authority is, whether it's from the bylaws or from a town charter, or, you know, it, and it, it just really distilled, I think. Um, and it would be a very helpful resource, not just for elected officials or appointed officials, but really for anybody in Bolton to be able to look in one place and see, oh, that's what these boards are. Um, you know, and I think Jenny, um, and Marie were going to work on kind of compiling a Bolton list, because, you know, Long Meadow has, has a lot of their own stuff, um, you know, most of which is appointed, unlike Bolton. But that was one of the things that I really liked about, um, the way Long Meadow laid things out. Um, and my plan for doing the section for the select board specifically is taking all of the policies, um, that Marie was able to find from two thousand four, two thousand six, and dribs and drabs here and there, um, that do already specifically apply to the select board and laying them out in a way that we can all look at them and see what we have in place. Some of them conflict with each other. Um, so we have to make choices as to, you know, how we, how we want to, um, phrase things and what policies we want going forward. Um, but that's in a new section to come.
No, it looks great. It's, it's looking very nice.
Um, can I ask a question just about, uh, the mechanics of, of the more granular review? Like, is this, we got a PDF, but at some point, are you going to be giving us access to like a Google Doc or?
Yeah, I'm, I'm working in Word, so, you know, I can share it, you know, when we have a something that's a little bit more refined, um, than what's there now, but, you know, something that we can redline and everybody can comment on. You know, and one of the other thoughts that I had was, um, and I had talked with Marie about this, is once we have this in, in pretty good shape, um, we might want to share it with other, um, the board heads and chairs to see if we're putting anything in here that's offensive to the way they do things, or, you know, if they have suggestions on how to improve it. And then the other thing, and this is a little bit further off, that I would like to see is, um, whether elect, other elected boards beside the select board would be willing to adopt these and say, we, you know, we, we, you know, that's not really our purview, but it would be nice for other elected boards to have a cohesive set of rules that they're also operating under. And if they want to just adopt these and say we're operating under these as well, that would be fabulous. Just so everybody knows the rules.
Sounds good. Thank you. Uh, so no formal action needed. This is just an update. Great. Okay. Um, so next up, we will have a brief opioid funds discussion.
Actually, um, and I can give you the, the brief update. As you're aware, Bolton since, uh, August of two thousand twenty-two has received, uh, twelve thousand dollars, twelve thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-five cents uh, through the opioid remediation and through, long story, but this is the money, uh, that the town had set up its own special fund for, so it's not sweeping to the general fund. There are a bunch of prescriptive practices that communities should follow for the best disbursement of the opioid funds. Filing that away had been contacted by Jenna Montgomery of the Nishoba Associated Boards of Health, where in the, um, midsummer, they were concerned that they had lost their funding for their grief support program. They offer this in, uh, surrounding communities. Bolton's, uh, grief support program is held at the public library in the second Tuesday and well subscribed. The funding supports the counselor. Uh, the Nishoba Associated Boards of Health, they started this as a pilot in the way back, uh, well, way back, September of twenty-three, um, as they had, uh, to close their longstanding hospice branch. Jenna was seeking information and assistance from those communities that participate. I broached this with the Board of Health, uh, as a potential option for contributing to some of our opioid funds for the ongoing, uh, work of the group, looking at the range of fifteen hundred dollars. Board of Health at their meeting thought this was a great idea. Because it sort of covers both, it just, it, it's grief, it's support, it's not specific, it's highly utilized, um, and very valued. At the very beginning of October, uh, had found out that Jenna relayed, and I confirmed with her today, they've received a private donor support, uh, to fund the grief support program. It's a private donor as well as a, uh, foundation. They have the name of the foundation. So they're set. They're set through the end of calendar twenty-four. They are likely set through the first quarter of calendar, uh, twenty-five. But they would like us to keep it on their radar, um, because likewise, as I've mentioned, the Board of Health is pretty enthusiastic about this as a program. So. Thank you, anonymous private donor, and.
Yeah, thank you.
Really.
So, um, uh, do we need to vote on anything this evening, Marie?
We, we do not. Um, we, we do not. Initially, this had been like the, the number one ask for the opioid funds of a small dollar amount, because our, the monies that we've received, um, although, although great, are not, uh, large enough to do something with unless we're pooling those monies with another town. So this seemed ideal.
Do we have a timeframe in which we have to spend that? Is there, are there timelines?
I do not believe so. I can double check on that. I'll find out the answer.
I wasn't aware that we had a grief support program, so thanks for flagging that.
Yes, so, um, actually, if you go to the Nishoba Associated Boards of Health, they have got a, you know, a little grief support and flyer, but, uh, held Tuesday, the first, uh, Tuesday in November, from one to two P M. here in Bolton at the public library.
Thank you. All right, um, thank you for that update. And, um, next we have approval of bills slash payroll warrants, W twenty-five dash seven, W twenty-five dash seven A. Uh, Kate, do you want to?
I would love to make a motion to approve the bills and payroll warrants, W twenty-five dash seven and W twenty-five dash seven A.
Again?
A roll call, Stan?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
And I'm also yes. Um, we do not have minutes for approval, I believe. Is that correct, Jenny? You can just, uh, yep, thumbs up. Um, and we revised our agenda. We do not have an executive session this evening. I did just want to make sure that I circled back though, Stan. Uh, I think that you, I think that you mentioned um, any future agenda items that you had wanted, but was there, was there anything else that you wanted to add?
No, I thi- I think, uh, we had a fairly good discussion. I think, you know, we, we're going to be spending a lot of time discussing, uh, the, the budget. Uh, although one, one agenda item that I had asked for a while ago is I really think we need to work with in conjunction with the advisory committee on what it is that the town of Bolton needs as a number. Uh, as, as a top line number of an assessment increase from the district. I, I think at this point, it probably, it should be a negative number based upon what I heard tonight, but that's not going to happen. But I think, I think we need to be a bit more proactive in that regard, and I think it's just one facet of, um, tackling with the, the issues that we have this, this upcoming budget season.
Okay, uh, well, I wanted to flag, um, as a future agenda item, although not immediate future, I, I, um, I'm going to touch base with Marie to figure out, uh, the best way of sort of just sharing information with the public about the senior relief programs that are available, uh, but also whether there's anything sort of more that can be done or explored. So Marie and I, we can talk about also whether it would make sense to invite somebody from council on aging to be part of that discussion, but um, I think it'd be good to just kind of air that in a public setting, so people are aware of what, what's out there.
When you talk about senior relief, in, in what context are you talking about?
Well, so there's, um, a few different, there's like the strip program, there's, I think, at least one or two other, um, forms of relief that different types of seniors, depending on whether they qualify, uh, can have access to. And my understanding, although I haven't done all the research, is that there may have also been discussion, um, at the state level about expanding the menu of options that are available to towns through local option. So I, you know, I, I, I'll talk with Marie to just figure out how we want to share this information, but I think it would be good to, to discuss it as a group, so we all know what's, what's out there. And, um, I had also received feedback from a constituent that it would be good for this to be on our radar as well.
Yeah, that's, that, that's great. I think also dovetailing with the budget, I, I've been sort of noodling over, uh, the issues revolving around seniors, uh, and long-term residents who no longer have kids in school. Uh, and the, the cost of education and the new high school. Um, I'd like to at some point in time have a conversation on, on some ideas, uh, how we can, um, in, in that vein, it's sort of a, sort of assist, not only the seniors, but, you know, folks who, who are, um, grappling with, with tax issues and, uh, the like. So, yeah, we'll, uh, we'll bring that up at the appropriate time.
Okay, sounds great. All right, with that, I think we are ready to adjourn, right? Nothing else on the docket? Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, uh, roll call, Stan?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. Thank you as always to Jenny and Marie. Jenny, this is your moment to shine.
I'm for the record, Azito Four.
For the record, Jenny shines at every moment.
It's true.
There you go.
Bye.
Good night.
Hi, everybody.